Allegiance, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 18th Fisher City Council Meeting. Our mayor and one of our other councilmembers should be along hopefully momentarily. Happy April 18th, which is Tax Day for a number of people. And those of you who know what I do for a living, I had a lot of caffeine today, so had it good to have it all out of the way. We have a couple announcements this evening. David, would you do the first announcement, please?
Yeah, John. City officials would like to invite the community to provide feedback on the Fishers 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Residents are encouraged to stop by the public meeting, and that will be Thursday, April 21st, at Connor Prairie, to provide feedback on the plan. Presentations will take place at 6:00 and 7:00 p.m., followed up by an open discussion and opportunity to share thoughts. So again, April 21st at Connor Prairie.
Thank you, David. Selena, do you have an announcement for us, please?
Fishers Movie Night in the Park are back this Friday night. Join Fishers Parks and Recreation at sunset for a free showing of Minions. Concessions will be available for purchase, so arrive early and come ready for another awesome night in the Nickel Plate District. My son says they're cheap date nights.
Brad, do you have an announcement for us, please?
On Saturday, April 23rd, Fishers Parks and Recreation will celebrate a Tree of Hope in honor of Indiana's Bicentennial. Partnering with Hamilton County Tourism, residents are invited to stop by for the ceremony planning schedule to take place at 5:00. And where is this located?
At Cumberland Park, 5:30 Saturday.
Cumberland Park, 5:30 Saturday.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brad. Moving on, we do have a presentation tonight for a 20-year service award.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Mitch Thompson, the Assistant Chief with the Police Department. Tonight I have with me Lieutenant Norm Tate. Tonight I'd like to award Lieutenant Tate his 20-year service award. A little bit about Norm. Norm came to us from Kokomo Police Department, and I had the fortunate ability to be one of his field training officers when he first came on. We had a good time. And then, from there, Norm also came to my shift. I was a shift supervisor and worked with Norm on the shift level. And then, as he progressed, we have continued to maintain a relationship and a supervisory status even today. Norm, you may recognize him because he sits on two very critical functions for our agency. One is he is our special events coordinator, so all of the events that go on in and around the city, the Nickel Plate District and all throughout, Norm is our police representative that makes that happen. And he is a guy who is willing to do anything to make it work. And we've had to have that mentality as we've moved forward to progress, to be smart and entrepreneurial and vibrant. Norm is a key part of our vibrancy with our police department to make things happen. The other thing that Norm does is he is our emergency operations center representative, the main guy that gets involved. And every month, there's a training session that goes on at the fire department, and Norm is the guy that represents the police to make sure that all of our folks within the police department are well-trained and well-prepared should any type of disaster strike Fishers. So with that, Norm, I'd like to congratulate you on your 20 years of service. We thank you, and we look forward to many more years to come.
If I could, John, I must say how important these special events planning committees are. And I got to give a shout-out to Tony Elliott, our Parks Director, over the weekend, on Friday night for our free movies. There must be a lot of cheap guys out there trying to go on dates because I think we had a record number, about 2,500 people showed up for our movies in the park. And then, the next morning, we had Keep Fishers Beautiful, and we had, I think, 400 or 500 volunteers. And then, Public Works had their recycle day, and how many cars dropped off, do you know? It was over 1,000 cars came to drop off recyclables. So we had a very busy Saturday, and Tony and his team, just, they did a great job. And there's so much planning that goes into all these events to ensure that we have safe and quality events, and I just can't thank them all enough for all the work that they do.
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly, as we, you know, talk about our 10-year award for Lieutenant, we also have been, just to introduce a new team member. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind introducing our new team member that's joined.
Sure. Well, I would actually ask his direct supervisor, Leah McGrath, Deputy Mayor, to come up and maybe share a few words about Tony, our new planning director.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce our new planning, Director of Planning and Zoning, Tony Bugato. He is joining us from California, and we're excited to have him aboard, especially as we enter the last half of our comprehensive planning and adoption and head into implementation phase here shortly. I think he's going to be an integral part of our team. So Tony, if you just want to say a couple of words to introduce.
Sure. I just want to say I thank everyone for the warm welcome. I'm very excited to be part of Fishers. It's a very progressive city that I've noticed within the first week and all the research I did online. And I thank the opportunity from the mayor and Leah and all the staff that I've worked with so far in my department has been great and very welcoming, and I look forward to help be part of the community move forward.
Welcome to Fishers, Tony.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. We do have a couple of proclamations this evening. Our first proclamation is the World Landscape Architecture Month. Is anybody coming up to discuss that? No. We do have a proclamation, and I don't know if, Mayor, if you read it or one of us should read it, or we mentioned maybe some folks had an opportunity, they want to have a picture taken, is that correct? Are they here this evening?
I don't know.
No? Okay.
Not saying about that.
All right, moving right along. Moving on to the next proclamation, 2016 Autism Awareness Month. And certainly, Cecilia, if you want to talk about that, that's something that you've been passionate about and working with.
Sure. Do you want me to read the proclamation?
Why don't you, please?
Talk a little bit? But, sure. As you know, April is Autism Awareness Month, and in Fishers in particular, we have a significant number of people with autism and families that reside and also come to Fishers because we have a number of outstanding autism centers here in Fishers. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas the month of April has been designated as Autism Awareness Month to celebrate and recognize all those who live and are impacted by the autism spectrum, and whereas autism is the fastest-growing developmental disability in the United States and an urgent public health crisis that demands a national response as it affects more than 3 million people, and whereas symptoms and characteristics of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in significant lifelong impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy, interactive behaviors, and understand verbal and nonverbal communication. And whereas the City of Fishers is honored to take part in the annual observance of Autism Awareness Month in the hope that it will lead to a better understanding of the disorder. And now therefore, I, Scott Badness, our mayor of the City of Fishers, along with the Honorable City Council, do here proclaim the month of April 2016 as Autism Awareness Month. And the City of Fishers calls upon citizens to observe the month with appropriate programs, activities. Furthermore, we encourage the citizens of Fishers to seek counsel and input from any person or group with knowledge and expertise in the autism spectrum." Thank you very much. I don't know if many of you know that myself, and I have a daughter with autism, so we're one of the families that live in Fishers that have been touched by autism.
Thank you very much, Cecilia. Moving on, we have one committee reporter, Finance Committee, Eric.
Thanks, John. A couple of projects that I wanted to update the council on that have been ongoing and will be ongoing is the partial census workers. We have been taking applications, workers, they have been testing. I think as of last week, there has been 150 or so applications, and I think Oscar mentioned that we're looking for about 200, 250. So all those residents out there that would like to help us out on the census, is the application available on the Fishers website, or is there a direction that you'd?
There's information on the website.
Yeah.
The numbers, if numbers of applicants that descend to life, they will bend a little down to people that pass, and they'll hire 80 people to conduct the census.
Yeah. And they'll be housed on the Delaware Township Building, so I wanted to special thanks to Delaware Township trustee Debbie Driscoll for allowing those employees to be housed there. Second thing is the transparency website. This is going to be a useful tool for residents to do deep dives and a very robust tool to monitor our financial transactions and our budgeting on an ongoing basis, not just during the couple of months that we talk about the budget and approve the budget. So I think you said that'll be ready in a week or two, and be testing and ready to roll live.
The website is live internally. We are auditing all the material to ensure that information when we get it published, right? But I don't know if there's anything else.
We had a brief look, yeah, we had a brief look at it last Wednesday, and for the residents that want to dive in, it's going to be a very valuable tool. Great. And then, one last thing, items 7, 8, and 9, all of our agenda tonight, the committee gave a favorable recommendation for a full council consideration.
Thank you, Eric, very much. Do I motion approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Do I have a second? All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Got it. Moving on to item 7 on our agenda this evening, request R 041816A, request to approve a resolution authorizing the city controller to transfer city funds.
Good evening. For the record, Oscar Gutierrez, City Controller. This transfer resolution would normally be placed on the consent agenda. It was administrative oversight on my staff. What these transfers are, just for public disclosure, is they're budget-neutral. We're simply taking appropriate money from one line item to another. For example, on here, you will notice that continuing education, we're taking $11,000 from the contractual services line to equipment and machinery. So we're simply allowing department heads to utilize their budget and move funds around as they see fit. If they don't need the funds for this purpose, they'll move them for this purpose. This is normally discussed at the Finance Committee. It was discussed this last time, and it was approved. This would normally have been on a consent agenda, but I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have specific to this.
Mayor, Mitch left, police you hook. On line item 1, couldn't we get LA Fitness donate that to us?
The treadmill?
Yeah.
You would, yeah, it would be nice. I will tell you that our equipment's used heavily, not only by our police department, but in general, all of our employees. And so I think it was money well-spent, but yeah, I wish we could get all that equipment. It can be pretty spendy.
Any questions for Oscar?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Pete, do I have a second? Second by Selena. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Moving on to item 8, request ordinance 041816A, request to approve an ordinance adopting an agency fund for the Parks and Recreation Department. First, second, and third reading this evening.
Thank you. What this would allow my department to do is to create a new fund specific to the Parks Department. An agency fund is similar to what you may be familiar to as a non-reverting fund, what is a specific revenue fund. What this fund will be specific to will be to account for deposits for Ambassador House and sales tax that has to be charged to Ambassador House. This fund will not have to be appropriated on an annual basis, which will allow our department to account for deposits that are made in fiscal year X and then have to be refunded in next year Y. And again, this was discussed and linked with the Finance Committee, was passed with due recommendation, and I'm happy to entertain specific questions for it.
Any questions for Oscar on this?
Now, this pertains to the Heritage House now, but it could pertain to other sites that fall into this particular use, right?
Within the purview of parks, so if we decide to use it for, oh, Saxony Hall, thank you, for Saxony Hall, we could use, it's already been placed, we would not have to create a new Saxony Hall account. Again, this is specific for sales tax, so it would just be housed temporarily there, and then we would just cut a check to the Department of State or Department of Revenue.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion by Pete to suspend the rules on first reading, a second by Eric. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve ordinance 041816A.
Motion by Todd, second by Pete. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Oscar, thank you very much. Not yet. Moving on to item 9, request to approve an ordinance approving a lease between the Fishers Redevelopment Authority and the Fishers Redevelopment Commission, authorizing the issuance of bonds for various road improvements on State Road 37. First, second, and third reading as well.
This ordinance would allow the execution of a lease that has already been approved and had a public hearing at the Redevelopment Commission last month. The project specifically associated to this is a project that has had a significant amount of public input, which is State Road 37. What the lease would allow the Redevelopment Commission is to take out a $12 million bond, which is the portion that Fishers has committed. And then, we would have, what you are doing, I was executing the approval of the lease between the RDC and the city. And we have done something similar last month for 116, and I'm happy to, again, entertain any questions that you may have specific to this process.
Any questions for Oscar?
Motion to suspend the rules.
I motion suspend the rules. Do I have a second? Second by Selena. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Pete, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 10.
Thank you.
Request to approve a tax amendment to the southwest corner of 116th and Oleo Planning Development to allow a drive-through on window on Lot 2. We're in second and third reading tonight.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Kevin Stotts. I'm a planner in the Department of Community Development. The item before you tonight is, as mentioned, a tax movement to the southwest corner of 116th and Oleo PUD, which was approved in November of 2002. As you can see from the zoning map here, this development is located on the, here we have Oleo Road and 116th Street highlighted, and right here are the parcels before you tonight. The tax amendment is specific to two lots within the PUD. So the first amendment, proposed amendment, would allow building 2, building on Lot 2 located right here, to be used for a coffee shop with a drive-through window. Currently, the PUD prohibits drive-through windows, and the petitioner has anticipated the coffee shop would be located in this area. In an order for them to move forward with that plans, they would like to modify the PUD to allow a drive-through window located on Lot 2 only. They have stipulated, though, in no event will such building ever be used for a fast-food restaurant. The second portion of the tax amendment would allow all the land uses in the C2 Commercial Zoning District under the Unified Development Ordinance to be permitted on the 9,100 square-foot building on Lot 7 located right here. In addition to the C2 uses, the petitioner has also listed general service businesses, indoor commercial amusement/recreational facilities, a parking lot or parking structure, medium-intensity retail, hospital, and a post office. Currently, the PUD restricts the uses on Lot 7 to C1 uses only. So in your staff report, we have provided a comparison of our C1 land uses to our C2. If you have any questions about that, please let me know. We also included on page 2 of the staff report definitions for medium, low, very low, and special handling retail, so you can better understand their definitions and examples of businesses which fall within that land use. So that is the request before you tonight. At first reading, on February 15th, council requested that the Engineering Department take a closer look at the FA traffic signal would now be warranted in this general location of 116th and Oleo Road. As many of you are familiar with, when Kroger expanded, they also committed to installing one traffic light either on Oleo or 116th Street when the Engineering Department deemed that it would be necessary. The Engineering Department has provided feedback on the need for that traffic signal on page 5 of the staff report. It's rather lengthy, so I will not go over it in detail right now, but we have invited Jeff Hill with the Engineering Department to help answer any questions you have on those comments if you have them after this presentation. Also during first reading, it was asked what the internal drive-through stacking requirements would be for a coffee shop and a drive-through. The Unified Development Ordinance requires seven cars to be able to stack in the drive-through lane, and the first car is counted at the pickup window and then six behind it. Staff feels that when you look at this site specifically, not only is the petitioner complying with the ability to stack seven cars, they also have the ability to, we would estimate, double that stacking ability without ever spilling onto 116th Street or Oleo Road. So if you take a closer look, traffic will be coming in off 116th Street off this main entrance here or the secondary, but in order to get to the order board, which is located on the south side of the building, you must drive around the building or enter from this side. And what that does is create the stacking to stay internal to the site before it ever spill onto the major thoroughfares. So as you can see, we are working off of a concept plan, and this is something that the Engineering Department and the Community Development Department will keep a close eye on as we work through our technical advisory committee and review the construction plans for the proposed coffee shop. But it is, again, something that we've looked into and we feel comfortable with at this stage of the request. We were also asked about the parking requirements for a coffee shop, and in your staff report, you'll see that one parking space is needed per two seats. And again, this Village at Geist Development works off of a shared parking agreement, so all of these parking spots are available for each of the uses on the site. Another question received at first reading was regarding, to move on to Lot 7 here, if a restaurant were to go into this building, where would the outdoor seating be located? The petitioner has addressed this question by incorporating into their text amendment that outdoor seating will be restricted to the north and the east sides of the building in order to keep them away from the residentially zoned areas to the west. They also wrote into the text amendment, PUD ordinance, that no outdoor entertainment or outdoor speakers shall be permitted in the outdoor seating areas associated with Lot 7. And then finally, at first reading, Councilman George requested that dry cleaning services be limited to drop-off and pickup only, and the petitioner has also made that change in the proposed text amendment. Regarding the public comments that we received about this petition, we did receive two comments at the Plan Commission meeting from Chris Cook and Brian Cook, who were both supportive of the request as presented. We also received an email from Tim and Jane Ann Mattingly, who live to the west of this site off 116th Street, who are also supportive of the request. At Plan Commission, we received feedback, again, on concerns with onsite stacking for the drive-through. I feel I've addressed that, but again, the concern is to keep any stacking that a coffee shop would have on the site and not have that spill onto 116th. We feel that this is an important comment and one that will be, continue to be reviewed through the technical advisory committee process. We had a, as we worked through the uses which would be permitted on Lot 7, the original request was that all C2 and C3 uses be permitted on Lot 7. As we worked through the Plan Commission meeting, though, it was, became obvious that several of the C3 uses were not desirable for Lot 7, so the petitioner has removed those land uses from their request and made the change in the proposed ordinance, uses such as car sales, fast food, gas station, fuel energy services, hotel motel, those will not be permitted any longer on Lot 7. The Plan Commission did send a favorable recommendation of 9 to 0. One other, the last comment we received during the Plan Commission meeting, again, was regarding the need for possibly a second traffic light on 116th Street or Oleo Road. Mr. Peterson stated at that meeting that Kroger has already stated that they would provide a traffic light if it was deemed needed in this general location, but the overall question is what if a second light is needed? We will allow the petitioner to address that comment during his presentation as well. So overall, staff is supportive of the proposed land uses and the tax amendment as has been proposed tonight. We will continue to review the stacking as we move forward. Staff recommends that council first resolve any outstanding questions you have regarding the traffic, the second traffic light and the need for, in the future. And then, once that's been addressed, we would recommend holding a combined second, third reading and approving this petition. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Steve Zinkin to go over a few more details of his request. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, members of the City Council. For the record, my name is Steve Zinkin. I'm a partner in Zinkin, excuse me, Flynn and Zinkin Development Company, the petitioner for this proceeding. And Kevin's done a great job of going through and articulating the various concerns raised at the initial City Council hearing and at the Plan Commission regarding the stacking, the internal circulation, the use restrictions. Hopefully, when you look at that site plan more closely, we've worked with our engineers to shift the building to the left so that the drive-through doesn't conflict where it was before further to the east for the incoming traffic. What I'd like to do is to focus on the remaining key issue, in my opinion, humble opinion, with regards to the need for one or two traffic lights at this intersection and the payment or the funding for them. I think everybody in this room is looking for a workable solution to the traffic situation that currently existed at that intersection. While at the same time not undoing inconveniencing motorists, a traffic light is needed. As probably all of you know, 116th Street at this intersection is controlled by the City of Fishers, and unfortunately, Oleo Road is controlled by the Hamilton County Highway Department. The Hamilton County Highway Department doesn't want a traffic signal on Oleo Road. We tried in years past. I think Steve Ferrybock perhaps recently has inquired, and they're pretty adamant in that. As noted earlier by Pete Peterson and Kevin, Kroger's committed to one traffic light, but only one traffic light, and that commitment expires, and I think just important to understand, that commitment expires in seven years automatically. And furthermore, as your city engineers indicated, a traffic light today is warranted on 116th Street immediately west of Fifth Third Bank, lining up directly across from Kroger Drive, about 600 feet west of 116th and Oleo Road. And what we would, with regards to the payment, what we would respectfully suggest is that, with all due respect, instead of saving quote-unquote Kroger's commitment to install a traffic light on Oleo Road, if that, if you exercised that commitment for one stoplight at 116th Street at this intersection, it would do several things. First of all, it would alleviate traffic and talking to Steve Ferrybock during the peak hours, the traffic on the northwest corner, the ones to exit northbound on Oleo Road during peak hours would be attracted to the stoplight that could come out. They could come out, they could turn left or east on one hundred and sixteen Street, turn at the arrow on Olio Road, and go northbound during non-peak hours. The traffic light isn't warranted, and you can get in and out without a problem. I may also point out that unlike the specialty grocery store at one hundred and sixteen Street immediately east of Hoosier Road, where that stoplight exclusively benefits that specialty retailer, the stoplight, if one was ever put in, if we could get the county to allow it, on Olio Road at its intersection with where the Kroger Drive exit onto Olio Road is right across the street from the entrance to the Westland Church. Immediately north of the Westland Church, you have five acres that's owned by the Westland Foundation for Future Development, and immediately abutting the south property line of the Westland Church is a existing drive from the shopping center on the northeast corner, so that if that stoplight was ever approved by the county, there would be multiple parties that benefit from it. A two thousand square foot Starbucks simply can't afford the cost of a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollar stoplight on one hundred and sixteen Street, and it would be most unfortunate for all of us, but we would respectfully have to decline from putting a Starbucks in or converting the ninety-one hundred square foot building to a C-two use simply because we can't economically, I'm not going to stand up here and make a commitment to you that I, that we can't honor, and yet at the same time, we are financially responsible corporate citizens, and we do care. What we can afford is sixty thousand dollars, and what I'm willing to commit is if the, if the city would continue to work on the county and ever get a stoplight on Olio Road, we will find, we will write a check to the city for sixty thousand dollars when we pull the first of either a permit for Starbucks or the ninety-one hundred square foot building. So you've got that funding in place today. It also solves the traffic problem today on one hundred and sixteen Street and also northbound on Olio Road. It allows you to capture the Kroger money before that time period expires, and it is our best good faith effort to help solve the problem, and I guess if a stoplight's never put in, the city uses it for the public good at another stoplight, and I, that is what we're suggesting. We're open to any other suggestions by council members or anyone else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zinkin. Any questions? Yes.
For Kevin, the use of stacking seven from the pickup window or from the order? Pickup. Okay. The one that I think I asked a couple months ago, if there's one up there at Olio, the last, the one time I was there in the morning was stacking eighteen behind Starbucks, behind the liquor store, behind Subway, and then out on Pigler Avenue. What would happen if you stacked eighteen there? I'm for Starbucks. Unfortunately, I'm a little bit more into Starbucks. But, or my wife, but the concern about if this one is in a great location and needed, don't disagree with that, but if it's anything like the one up at the end of Olio there, we're going to create a tremendous problem.
That's a problem. All around.
Yeah.
Well, then, and then to piggyback on that, my concern, I'm generally in favor of Starbucks being here. I have no problem with that. Two things that I look at here, number one, I think that, is that Fifth Third Bank right there?
Correct.
What is the, for their drive-through, for their ATM and their teller, is it south-to-north drive-through? I just don't use that bank. I don't know. Does anybody know? Okay. So if it's south-to-north, so they're have, they're relying on that entrance right there, I would assume, we're talking about the same entrance in that if it stacks at Starbucks, you know, is there, have we heard from Fifth Third? Are they in favor of this? Do we know, has anybody talked to them about the potential impact of their business?
I've not talked to Fifth Third, but then when we originally did Fifth Third, our written cross-parking agreement shows that Starbucks there, and...
But, okay, I appreciate that, but does it show a south-to-north drive-through that then would cut potentially block off, and I'm not saying it is, I'm trying to visualize this, maybe I'm way off, okay?
No, it's a good point. One of the reasons I like that, when you think about it, their busiest times in the morning, the busiest time for the bank generally is in the PM. Also, when you look at their stacking in that picture, perhaps, that depiction perhaps doesn't accurately show it, but if I'm at the ATM, which is on the far right, or one of the three drive-through, I would probably have to stack, not an engineer, but just been, having been out there for years, probably seven or eight cars behind all four of those drive-through lanes and the ATM, and I've never seen that.
I'm more, I get that. I don't, I'm not really worried about that. I'm worried more about just the individual car that's coming, and they have to wait in the Starbucks line to go to Fifth Third. That's the only thing I'm thinking of.
And Todd, let me jump in here, because I'm real familiar with this intersection. And I, there could be some cars that run out that direction you're talking about, okay? There's probably a minimum of five cars that can go through those drive-through lanes, and there's three of them, one's an ATM, but my belief is the traffic patterns that are going to occur for the Starbucks are going to occur as you come in off the westbound entrance there, they're going to immediately turn into the bank, they're going to, they're going to start to stack as they go into the drive-through up where the yellow line is and into the drive-through. The same to come in, if they go further and enter in right there where the Walgreens is, if they come in that way, they're going to turn and come back. They're not going to go line up behind where the bank is.
Okay.
Right? If you had to stack cars from there, Brad, because I go to the same Starbucks you're talking about, sit out on that street a lot after I drop my kit off, I believe you could probably get almost thirty cars before you hit out to that, that westbound entrance of where the bank comes in.
And then my...
They don't want thirty cars.
Okay, that makes sense. My only other point, I just want us to make sure we're talking to Fifth Third, I mean, just, just being good business partners there. The other thing is, if we're going south-to-north, when someone's turning in off of one hundred and sixteen Street at your, you know, when they're coming south from north to south right there, right by Starbucks?
Right.
Okay? Is that, how close are those lanes?
They are, those are typical drive, typically you have a twelve-foot drive lane, so you're coming in, you've got twelve feet to where that, where the, that curb to the east of the Starbucks drive-through window is. You go twelve feet from there, and then you've got another twelve feet as you exit out, which is typical for an egress-ingress.
Okay.
That's the big improvement we were able to seize upon and work with from the initial council hearing.
May I interject if you don't mind? Did you have something, Brad?
Yeah, I'm just one of our city engineers, and I work with this and have an opinion on it. Don't need to break your father's. I don't know what the process is in the, yeah, the drive. Yeah, the drive, I just picked my coffee up, because that, the pickup window is to the north into that building, so I just picked my coffee up, and I'm putting my change in my pocket, I'm texting, and somebody's coming in off of one hundred and sixteen.
You pay with cash?
I had a frost over his pad, and he did not...
Sure. We've talked about that very thing, and I think that led to some of the changes that have already been made to shove the building to the west to get, to get that drive-through lane away from where the potential ingress and egress was coming in at the right-in, right-out access point you're talking about on one sixteenth. And I think there's even some narrowing of the driveway, if I remember right, so that we can kind of make sure we have those lanes separated. One thing we've talked about is continuing to analyze that. Once they get past, you know, this, this colored rendering, this graphic we've got here, once we have a more detailed site plan, we can talk about where that conflict is or is not. Is there a weaving-type issue like you're talking about? Do we fix it with signage, or do we restrict any of the movements? We want to, I guess, dive further into those site-specific details related to the exiting traffic versus ingress traffic, once we get a little bit farther down the road with a detailed site plan that we can look at vehicular movement patterns to better identify whether we do have an issue here or not, and then work with the petitioner to solve those.
So then tonight, you couldn't say yes or no.
I can't say yes or no with the level of detail we've got with just the pretty graphic...
So if we were to say yes tonight, and then it gets to the point where you say no, what happens?
Well, we would need to work with the petitioner to find a mutually acceptable solution, so before we approve the site plan, from an engineering perspective, we'd want to make sure we've satisfied any concerns related to the traffic exiting the drive-through lane, and again, whether that's forcing everybody to turn left as just an example and not allow that right out and seeking out that movement. We would just need to analyze that. We'd work with A and F Engineering to make sure we've got safe ingress and egress patterns there.
So in short, we would deny an ILP? We would deny a permit?
Before we issue the ILP, we would, we would want to make sure we've got those concerns satisfied. Yes, thank you.
I might like to interject, because I think some of the points that you guys are raising were part of the reason why, at the planning commission, Pete had made the motion that he did, which you saw in the minutes, which was placing the requirement of that additional signal at one hundred and sixteen Street. And truly, I don't have the answer tonight about what can happen at that second drive to the east, but I think part of the reason that I believe Pete proposed that was that that would then encourage and really allow for full movements out on one hundred and sixteen Street. You know, it's possible in my mind that maybe it is just a right out that happens at that other drive, so you don't have that oncoming traffic. I don't know what the right answer is, but, you know, I think that really getting to the signalization is important, and I think that's what Pete was concerned about. I know I share that concern, and actually, related to that, the petitioner approached, both Pete and I, and, you know, I've done some additional investigation with related parties that I thought I would just share with the council. I don't know if we'll be able to tonight get to a resolution or not, but, because I think that some of this is really just kind of the economics of what the developer is dealing with and then what the city can do to assist, but there are a couple of related issues that I think are important that the council be made aware of. Steve had made mention of this, but I really think we need to be very cognizant of this, and there is an horizon for when the signal agreement with Kroger expires, and they've agreed to that installation. I spoke to the Kroger Real Estate Director, because when Steve Zinkin approached us and had said, suggested that the requirement that was placed on the project at Planning Commission to have the developer fund that installation just really was something that he was unable to do from the project economics. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just saying that's what he suggested. What Pete and I were kind of brainstorming and the mechanics of how this gets done really is something that I think needs some, some further investigation, but I think there is a public benefit of that signal to go in there. I think right now, we've got some dangerous, you know, movements that are occurring. I think, quite frankly, it occurs on Olio Road as well. I believe that both signals, and this is my, my thinking, but, you know, from my own experience from a commercial standpoint, are necessary. I think that they help make those intersections safer, and I think that's the last thing anybody wants to see, is some, you know, fatality or other injury occur there. Clearly, we have an agreement in place with Kroger that allows for one of those to be installed, and my understanding is that can be either at one hundred and sixteen Street...
Okay, so the agreement with Kroger is one stoplight at one hundred and sixteen or Olio?
Correct. That is, that is correct.
What's the, is there a timeframe?
Seven years.
Seven years.
Seven years. And what is the expiration of that? From grand opening?
Seven years from when they opened their store. Their store will be open in early October.
New store.
The new one. New one.
So, oh...
Seven years, I think.
I'll say two sixteen, two twenty-three.
Yeah, October twenty-three.
Yeah, and the dynamics are a little more challenging, because as Steve said, you know, the county controls Olio Road, and they will then approve whether and how a signal gets installed. But I did talk to Steve Ferribock. He said that warrants are met on one hundred and sixteen Street. I'd be surprised...
Oh, the warrants are met on one hundred and sixteen?
Yep, they would be. I can't imagine that they're not at, at Olio Road, but he did say that's a tougher challenge, because the county has historically been reticent to allow for...
If the warrants are met, doesn't the city just say Kroger installed?
Well, I think, let me interject. I think Rich is talking about the, the drive location we've been discussing at the west end of this site, the one that Kroger has full access on as well as this site, and so the, what we have looked at to date is, does this intersection that's about six hundred feet west of one hundred and sixteen and Olio, does this meet signal warrants? And what we would contend is that with the Starbucks and the additional development that is being proposed under the text amendment, it would meet the one-hour peak hour warrant for, essentially for the exiting traffic, so they can find a gap into one hundred and sixteen Street traffic, and so that is a warrant that is satisfied that we have looked at. This may or may not have an impact upon the, the traffic that has already been studied related to the Kroger side. I would want to refer, confer with A and F a little bit more related to that, but there could be the potential where both signals end up being warranted at some point in the immediate future or down the road.
If I may, I'll try and wrap this up real quickly, because I think it's important, just again, to share some of this conversation and what the related parties are suggesting at this time. What we are trying to do, knowing that the Kroger agreement is in place, they're, they have committed to that, I confirmed in my conversation with the Kroger Real Estate representative, they are fine honoring that whenever, you know, we feel it's necessary, and that's, you know, with input by Jeff and A and F, whether that's at one hundred and sixteen Street or Olio Road. The, you know, suggested compromise, if you will, that Pete and I were talking, and again, we've not talked to anybody else about this, but I think this is for the council to discuss tonight, is, is there some means of sharing in this other signal, and whether that's, you know, at Olio or one hundred and sixteen Street? I don't, I don't know that it matters that much, because again, I think we're talking about traffic safety issues. We suggested that there be a one-third sharing by the city there, and how that gets done, I don't know, because I understand there may be some limitations on that, but, and then the other two-thirds, part of the logic was that would be shared one-third by the developer, one-third by Kroger. Unfortunately, Kroger said they were not willing to do that. They felt that, you know, what, what they've got in place is something they'll honor, but they're not willing to do that. So either, you know, in some way, we as a city are willing to fund to that level, or, you know, is there some other way that the developer in some combination can, can make up that gap? So I would say that's the stage of the, of the discussions. Pete, do you want to add anything else to that?
No, I think you did an excellent job capturing what we've been kind of discussing, and I, I think Steve, maybe from your perspective, if we were looking at this, obviously, well, Jeff, let me ask this, I mean, if Kroger, if, if Starbucks goes in and opens tomorrow, is it going to need a traffic light right then and there then?
Yeah, I don't know if I can answer that standing here today, Pete. We can get you an answer, but what we looked at were the trips generated by the Starbucks and the two other buildings proposed in, in aggregating that in total.
Jeff, in your, in your opinion, if you could only get one stoplight, would be better on one hundred and sixteen, wouldn't it? Because that serves both the north and the south, where Olio's only serving the west side.
Right. It does serve both sides of one hundred and sixteen Street where there are those developments. I think there was discussion earlier by Mr. Zinkin that if there was one on Olio, it could benefit some of the shops on the east side, so I think there's a lot of entities there that stand to benefit. That, I guess the one thing I would add related to cost sharing or just cost in general is that the traffic signal at this location, wherever it went, oh, sorry, I was looking on my screen here, but now I'm on TV.
It's backup.
Thank you. The, the signal here, in my mind, it's not something that we had budgeted for, it's not something that had been previously computed in the road impact fee calculation, so those dollars aren't there, and that's why the initial recommendation that ended up in your staff report was for the petitioner to pay the full load, which would be similar to the arrangement that, that was made at the fresh time signal that was referenced earlier, and that is how that, that deal was structured.
Perhaps I could make a suggestion as listening to this dialogue unfold. The Olio Road ingress-egress to Kroger is probably a bit of a question mark as to whether we're ever going to need a signal or not, but the certainty does exist today that if you put in a Starbucks and you have this additional development, that a traffic signal is warranted. What could occur is that the developer goes ahead and puts a traffic signal in at their cost today, and then if there is no need for an additional light in the next five to seven years or in that timeframe, that that money then goes back to the developer on this project as a reimbursement for expenses associated with putting the light in.
When Kroger pays?
When Kroger pays, that money goes, we would, we, so, yes, it would basically, that money would go directly to the developer. We would make a decision prior to that seven-year window that says... that says, we don't, we don't need the light. If that's the case, then that money would go to the developer so that that individual doesn't, we didn't waste the obligation by Kroger. But at the same time, if we decide then that we do need an additional light, that our expenses would be covered in that regard. And then if there's, you know, I mean, that would be a starting place to allow them to move their project forward while at the same time leaving the door open for us if for some reason down the road we need to do something at Oleo.
Why don't we do the one on 116th and then check the next few years whether it's needed? I go there quite a bit and I try to get out on Oleo and I get frustrated. So then I try to come down 116th. I did it at 2:00 today and I was probably seven minutes trying to get out. But I would think if you have the stoplight at 116th, then I'll take that, turn left and turn left to go back north on Oleo. I don't perceive that I would need, personally, would need the one on Oleo. I'll get out on 116th and then go back north on Oleo.
And I think this agreement would allow for that to happen. And then down the road, if for some reason, for a period of time, when we have this five to seven-year period, if development picks up and all of a sudden we say we need Oleo Road, then we would go ahead and have Kroger go ahead and put that light in. But if they don't, then all of the benefit, if you will, would go to the current developer. He would be reimbursed for all those expenses.
But isn't Kroger going to pay for the one on 116th?
If they do, then you eliminate your opportunity to get one at Oleo.
Right. We're only getting one out of Kroger.
Right. But my point is to allow this development to occur today while still leaving the door open for if you were to want a light at Oleo Road. Does that make sense?
Yes.
But I think we need the light there first, don't we?
Scott, I really appreciate that. But the money's not, I'd have to pass. My reputation means I'm not going to stand here and commit to you and then not be able to follow through. And the economics are not there. That's my fundamental problem. And I just assume pass keep a good reputation, which I don't, it hurts everybody. You don't get it on the tax rolls, the neighbors don't get the Starbucks they want. But I'm just being...
I appreciate that.
Very open. And that's the reason I offered the 60 because I, take it, it's funded, here it is. If you ever use it and if you don't, you've got it. Use it for another stoplight community for the public.
Steve, let me ask this question, okay? Because basically what I'm hearing is from a business standpoint, right? There's not a cost justification to pay for $180,000 light for the 9,000 square foot Starbucks.
2,000 square foot Starbucks or even 2,000 and 91.
2,000 square foot Starbucks. So, but you have the other two outlots which have not been developed, which you're no contracts on, there's nothing currently underway to do those other two projects. Okay? Would there be openness from your standpoint as those projects develop to then kick in for the other two-thirds of that light if those projects develop?
Pete, I'm open to anything. There's really only one. When you take the Starbucks, you take the 9100, and I have no commitments on the 9100. It could be years down. Then the only other one's the office building closest to the mound. Okay, there's not a demand for that or I would have built it years ago.
I understand.
So, sure, but I'm being realistic with you. It's not going to come, it's not there. That's what I'm struggling with.
Let me do this because unfortunately, a lot of this information literally by me was discussed today. I might suggest that we continue this and have some time. Because I do think Steve is genuinely trying to work through this and I think it's a betterment of the area. So I think we, we don't want that message to be lost in you. There's appreciation for that, but yet I...
And I appreciate you. If the project justified, it'd be done.
Well, but I think to maybe the goal here is really to make sure that both intersections are approved to a point, and we haven't really even had a chance to talk further with Jeff Hill about that, that it's safe. And so I think that a 30-day continuance would allow for the time to talk to the petitioner, to have further conversation with the engineering department. But I do think this is an opportunity really for the city to benefit in both areas in a way. And I don't know if Scott's plan is the best, but maybe there's some hybrid of that that can work.
Hang on, hang on.
But what I'm hearing though, doesn't get you back to where you're at. Because from a fundamental side, I've got a developer here saying he's willing to pay $60,000 and then basically his hands are tied, right? So that's where he's in at kind of the max dollar.
Well, I think there's opportunities to be creative. I mean, we do these, we work through these projects all the time. I think tonight, there's a willingness, I think, from what I'm hearing from the council, to not just stay, Steve, tough luck, put the light in or else. At least that's what I'm collectively kind of hearing. If that's the direction, then I think we can go back and try to figure out the best possible structure, bring it back to you for your consideration at another date and time.
So at this point, we're looking, just having second reading, is that correct? Okay, hang on just a moment. Hang on. My turn. We had a public hearing at the Plan Commission, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So you have 90 days to pass third reading. So if that's the route that you want to go, I would suggest holding second reading, just second reading tonight, and then you can bring it back within the next three months to hold your third reading.
Are we allowed to have public comment here tonight?
You are, if you'd like.
Are there folks here who want to have public comment here this evening regarding this particular issue? Just making sure. Always like to have opportunity for people to come up and express themselves on a particular issue. Okay, very good. So at this point, again, appreciate all the conversation tonight. Mr. Zinkin, I appreciate your willingness to invest in our community. But at this point, I think we have a lot of things we need to work through. And for us to try and pass this on second reading, I would not be good for you nor for our community. So at this point, I have a motion to have second reading. Or have second reading.
And I'd also ask, again, you've got such a good outside traffic engineer. I've gotten my information from Steve in terms of flowing from the Kroger Center south to this intersection as Brad articulated. So you've got a lot of good resources to call on. Happy to work with any of you. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, council members and staff for contributing this. Thank you. Moving on to item...
John, let's go ahead and take a vote for second reading.
Okay, very good. I have a motion for second. Do we have a second? Second by Selena, motion by Pete. Alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Ayes have it. Moving on to item 11. Request approval rezoned from R2 to PUDC and a new PUD district ordinance and concept plan regarding 3.6 acres on the north side of 118th Street west of Oleo. Second, third reading. Got windy, didn't it? But we're going to get it worked out.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Adam Zachlikowski, a planner with the Community Development Department. The item before you tonight is the extra space PUD. This is a rezoning of property. It's on the north side of 118th Street, just west of Oleo Road. The request is being made by Jim Adams of French Property Management LLC. And more specifically, it involves a rezone from R2 to PUDC. And this also includes a PUD district ordinance and concept plan regarding about 3.6 acres. So if you recall, you held as a council first reading for this item back on February 15th. The Plan Commission reviewed the request on March 8th and they issued a positive recommendation. More specifically, this self-storage facility would include about 98,000 square feet and 650 units. As it stands today, there are four lots on the property and each of those properties contain a single-family residential home built in approximately the late 1950s. It should be noted that each owner is consenting to the rezone and they are under contract to sell to Mr. Adams. Now, at the Plan Commission meeting, there were a few items that were discussed. One of those items dealt with a, one item that was submitted by the developer in response to the Plan Commission discussion dealt with a sunset clause. And we do have some revised language for you tonight that the, both the city staff and the developer has consented to. I'd just like to enter this into the record. It basically makes for a better situation in the future. So what it says is that after the seventh anniversary of approval of this PUD ordinance by city council, this PUD ordinance shall be rescinded and the PUDC zoning shall be changed, rezoned, to a straight zoning district compatible with the Fisher's 2040 comprehensive plan. Such a rezoning can be initiated by the city and city council shall approve such a rezoning based upon a recommendation by Plan Commission during a public hearing. So the reason that this was put in, as you know, this is a fairly small project and it does make sense in the future to simply have it straight zoned. We weren't able to do that at this point in time because this particular use isn't specifically spelled out in the U D O. And that is something that we'll have to address at some point via text amendment. Very quickly, the only other items that were discussed at the Plan Commission was that, as you can see on this particular exhibit on the north side of the property, it is a pretty tight area. And typically, there would be buffering requirements that would be required. But the petitioner was able to speak with the Hamilton Southeastern School District, the property owner to the north, and they have consented to allowing four canopy trees and four evergreen trees per 100 lineal feet within 20 feet of that property line. So it does give them some extra space that they needed. The only other modification, minor modification, was that all evergreen trees along the west property line here are required to be evergreen, all evergreen along the west property line. Lastly, it should be noted that during the public hearing at the Plan Commission, no letters of remonstrance were received and no remonstrators spoke during that public hearing itself. With that, I'd be happy to address any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions for Adam?
Yeah, I got a question. Adam, if I recall, that road is in somewhat disrepair, not great shape. And it says in the staff report, it's unknown at this time who's going to pay for that. So do we have a off-the-shelf estimate of how much that's going to cost? Because I'm assuming if we approve this, we'll be the ones paying for that. There won't be any mix at that point.
Mr. Mueller, we do not have, I'm not aware of an actual cost estimate that's been done to rehabilitate the entire street. As you know, there is a gap between the western edge of the pavement and where the church property begins out to the west. The church has stated that since they need secondary access to their site, they would fill in this gap over here. But you're right that at this point in time, it is not certain who would pay for the upgrades to this road. It would, it would either be the self-storage owner, it could be the church, since they're a primary benefactor of that road. The city may be involved, but that's, it's not definite at this point.
Do you have a county road or a county?
No, it's a Fisher's Road.
So we were...
To my knowledge, there has not been a, to my knowledge, the engineering department has not undergone a cost estimate for how much it would, it would cost.
I'm not certain. Are you certain that that's a Fisher's Road? Because that's unincorporated, isn't it?
No, it's actually, when they, when this piece was annexed over here to the south when the Kroger area was annexed, they brought that in as well.
Okay. So it goes to the other side, the right away to the north?
Yeah, correct, correct.
Any other questions for Adam? Is petitioner here this evening? Any comments from the petitioner? Adam, thank you. I'm sorry.
President, members of the council, for the record, my name is Alex Beatty. I'm an attorney at Faygrubaker Daniels. Just want to first say thank you to Adam. He's been really excellent to work with in resolving the issues that we had just in designing the project and crafting the PUD. We don't really have anything additional to provide for you, but given that Adam gave such a good presentation, but we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for the petitioner?
Motion to suspend the rules.
I think there's some folks here that may want to speak. Is there a public hearing? I can allow it though if I want to?
Yeah, you can allow a public comment if you want. There's no public hearing requirement.
Any folks that want to come up and speak here for the record, just to make, I'll let you make a quick comment. I just want to make sure one has an opportunity to speak.
My name's Bruce Brown. I live at 13676 East 118th Street. I am one of the homeowners.
You've been here before, haven't you?
I've been here oh, about 10 years.
It's been longer than I've been here.
You name it, I've been here.
I wasn't.
No. When the, to start with, on 118th Street, to get back to Todd's questions about 118th Street, that street was, has been brought up, I don't know how many times, even when Kroger was put in, what they were going to do with it. Kroger says, we do not need any part of that road to help us out. At that time, we did not have anybody interested in this. We were, we were willing to even let Kroger take a hole in the mound and open 118th Street up just to give us access to, you know, as a thorough street because we knew the church was talking about doing this. And so when I brought it up, everybody was like, 118th Street's not going to be developed because Kroger doesn't want no part of it. I have been told anywhere from the church at the last, at the Planning Commission, Steve Harding was here representing the church as a remonstrator. He did at that time tell the Planning Commission, and Pete was here, Richard was here, and he did tell at that time that when the church goes to the second phase, because right now, the first part of that building is just the first phase, when they go to the second phase, they are looking at opening that road up. But in the same tone, when they said opening it up, it could be anything from just for fire trucks, could be a gate at the end of it to allow a second entrance just on the day of the church. The gates would then be closed. It would not be a public access road. And so at this time, Kroger has not willing to do anything with it. And so we were told that it would basically just stay the way it is until the church decided what they want to do with it. That it had nothing to do with anybody else but the church. And so as far as that part of it, that's all I've got to say about that part of it. Because we even, when Kroger went in, we even said, why don't you put the stoplight on Oleo to help Kroger eliminate the other stoplight that they wanted, needed to put on Oleo? We said, put it at 118th Street and make it a real, and nobody was willing to do that. So...
Obviously, when I came in here, I always realized you were here for this tonight. I wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to speak. Are you in favor of this development?
Oh, very much so. It has taken all four of us. Anybody come out to our house, anybody come out to our house and you'll see the construction.
And I had whispers from councilors saying they're in favor, but just wanted to make sure. It's always good to double down, making sure.
A-OK.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Well, and I'm absolutely in favor. I just want to make sure, my concern is when there's some blank there that, is it a million dollars? Is it 500,000?
Let me just point something out for you, okay? So we have a clear understanding. Currently, there's homes that lie north on that street are all unincorporated. We collect zero taxes from them. Zero. Okay? So now we're going to go ahead and annex them in, we're going to put a development there, and we're going to collect taxes from them. And we're also collecting impact fees. Is that correct? I assume we collect our standards off. Is there any tax abatement that's been given to this property? No. So basically, you're putting somebody in the tax rolls from now forward and potentially you may have to pay for a road.
And I get that. What's the number?
Probably about 100,000 bucks.
Well, it's, so let's slow our roll here a little bit. The road, we need to find out if the road's already in the city of Fisher's and is in our inventory because if it is, there's really no additional conversation. It's our responsibility.
It's our road regardless. Last year in 214, when I sat in the audience, somebody up here said it's a county road.
So we need to, we need to find out the details behind that. But regardless of that, we can, we can work through that at Board of Works or what have you. I think it's, it's going to be what it's going to be in terms of who owns the road and how we go moving forward. So...
Just stepping back, Pete had a motion to suspend the rules on second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. Alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Do we have a motion approved?
Motion.
Motion by Todd, second. Second by Pete. Alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Abstain. And Dave is abstaining.
Thank you.
We're done on this part. Moving on to item 12. Ordinance 03211... Moving on to item 12. Ordinance 0321160. Request adopt ordinance established updated park impact fees. Second reading. Good evening, Tony.
Good evening. For the record, Tony Elliott, Parks and Recreation Department. Every five years, the city of Fisher's is required to update our park impact fees. Procedurally, there's two major steps to do this. At the last city council meeting, the council held first reading on the first step of that, which is the zone improvement plan. Since that time, the zone improvement plan has gone to the Plan Commission. They've got a favorable recommendation for us a couple weeks ago, and we are back tonight at city council seeking second reading, and if council so chooses, third reading to approve the zone improvement plan. The zone improvement plan is made up of the corporate boundaries of the city of Fisher's. That's our improvement zone, and the levels of service that we are proposing through this plan. So acreage of parkland per thousand residents, mileage of trails, number of playgrounds, number of different metrics. So again, procedurally, this is paired with the city's comprehensive plan. So at Plan Commission, as we've kind of ushered this through, it's been in conjunction with the city's comprehensive plan. So a lot of the information you see in the parks, an open space component of Fisher's 2040 plan or the comprehensive plan, this really parallels and mirrors that. So the request tonight is to have second reading, and again, if council so chooses, third reading on the zone improvement plan portion of the park impact fee plan.
I think it's important to note that we've had very productive meetings with BAGI, the Builders Association of Greater Indianapolis, and they are supportive of the study, and we've gone through that with them in detail and had a lot of good conversations with them. So we did take that extra step to communicate with our stakeholders.
Any questions for the council?
Yeah, Tony, just had... do you want to... are we covering 12 and 13 at the same time, or we just covered?
So we've broken it out as two separate ordinances. The first ordinance applies to the zone improvement plan. I'd ask approval on that one first, and we'll move to item 13.
I'll wait to...
Well, but I think, to clarify, I think it's right and proper to have a general conversation because if, for whatever reason, you said, "I don't like the plan, and we need to add XYZ into it," it does affect the rate. So I mean, I think it's justifiable to have just a general conversation about both items, even though we do have to statutorily approve the plan before the rate. But I would welcome any comments now on the plan.
Okay. Then, looking through there, there is nothing for the next 10 years for any more pickleball courts in Fisher's. And based on the success of the four you put in, and I know Britain Falls plays there every day, Monday through Friday. They try to stay off the weekends so other people can use them. Of course, they think they own them. But I'm just concerned that we don't have anything for the next 10 years for any more pickleball courts anywhere in Fisher's, let alone adding four more out there, which I think the demand's gonna be there, because we're using them... we... I'm sorry, we being Del Webb community, and we're only at 50% capacity. So in the next five years, we'll be at 100% capacity. So I'm concerned about that. And then, I hate to put the mayor on the spot. In my generation, I know has short-term memory problems, but when the mayor was out there a couple times talking about pickleball courts, he said the bids, he thought, were gonna come in a little bit under your estimate. And the community then said, "Well, then, why don't you take that money and build bocce courts?" And the mayor committed to building bocce courts, and I don't see any bocce courts in the park impact fee either. So I'm just representing the Del Webb community, the questions they want to make.
Let me address... let me address both of those. I appreciate you bringing those up. First of all, the bocce ball was... we priced it out, and what I assume bocce ball courts would cost were not what they... what they came in. And so we do want to do that at some point when the budget allows. As for your question about the specifics of a pickleball court or bocce ball, one of the quirks with the state of Indiana statutory requirements around impact fees is that you have to set a level of service, and then you have to maintain that level of service. And so any new or additional items, we can't implement into our impact fee agreement, so our impact fee plan. So you have basketball courts, you have football fields, you have soccer fields. All of those were our initial level of service, which started...
96.
96. And that's where you set your standards and say, "We will have three baseball fields for every 10,000 people," whatever the ratio was. At the time, no one had ever contemplated such things as pickleball courts. And so for me to... if I were to put in new things like that, that would be challengeable by state law, because I have now increased the level of service to our residents above and beyond what our initial levels of service were. So we have to adhere to, basically, these are the things, these are X number of baseball courts per thousand, and you have to maintain at that level. I can't add new technologies or new things like that, if that makes sense. It is a quirk that, for whatever reason, from a legal perspective, I don't exactly understand it, but that has been the case over the years. So the last five-year plan, if I would have come in and said, "You know what? I don't agree with five baseball courts per thousand. I think we need seven baseball courts per thousand," they would view that as challengeable, that I'm increasing the level of services. So I think there are logical and good conversations to be had about implementing things like pickleball and any other new trend in outdoor recreation. They may not be funded by park impact fees. We can fund them with CCD funds and...
So you can just put them into the budget?
Absolutely. I just can't include them in the park impact fee calculations per state statute. But I agree with you that, I mean, I was out there Sunday night, and there were people all over the place playing that. So I agree with you, it's a growing trend. I just, by state statute, cannot implement a new concept into the park impact fee. We have to keep with the same standards and be consistent with that over the period of time. Long-winded answer to a short question.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just have a quick... so that would also include, like, ADA equipment in a park or something like that?
Well, so here's where I'm gonna get really nuanced. If, for whatever reason, we decided that we wanted to replace a playground, or I shouldn't say replace a playground, because you can't even do that. If you were to add an additional playground, because we have more people coming to Fisher's, if we decided to build a playground that was ADA accessible, that's fine. That... there's no issue with using park impact fees towards that purpose. So there is the capability to put ADA playgrounds and things of that nature into the procurement of additional resources to our city, if that makes sense. But like, if we were to replace a playground, I could not use park impact fees to replace a playground, because that's routine operations and maintenance, if that makes sense. But it's well within our purview in procurement of playgrounds to make sure that the playgrounds are ADA accessible. That's just a design feature.
Well, I was just thinking, like, special, like, type of equipment, like a special swing or a sensory... you know, there's sensory parks where there's special...
So that would be, if you were to put a special swing on a playground, that's just a design feature. But you are adding an additional playground, which is noted as a level of service requirement in the park impact fee study. So that would qualify.
Okay, thanks.
Tony, a couple things that you brought up in the Finance Committee that I think are worth repeating is this increase is the first one in 10 years, correct?
Correct.
And then, there's a six-month lag associated with this increase. So we're essentially talking about the 2017 building season, right?
Correct. So our current park impact fee rate expires essentially at the end of 2016. So once city council, assuming approval, it'd be at the May meeting of the full park impact fee rate. That has a six-month period before it is enacted. So approval in May or even June, we would be right on time to get that updated rate for 2017, and that would start that new five-year period, 2017 to 2021.
Other questions? Do we have a motion to suspend the rules and pass on second reading?
Can we do that?
Can we do that? Or we need to go to second reading?
Yep. You can suspend the rules for item number 12 and pass on second reading, and then for 13?
And 13, we have to do first reading.
We'll just do first reading. That's correct, because it's gotta go to the Plan Commission.
Do we have a motion to suspend the rules? Motion by Eric, do we have a second? Second by Rich. Alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. New motion approved? Motion by Todd, do we have a second? Second by Eric. Alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Eyes have it. Moving on to item 13. Request to adopt ordinance establish updated park impact fee rates.
All right. So this is the second phase, or this is really the result of the levels of service that we proposed in the item 12 in the zone improvement plan. So the rates, the actual park impact fee rates that we're talking about are as follow. Let me... I'll put up a graph here in just a moment. The single-family detached home proposed rate is $1,667. The multifamily rate is $1,234. So those are our two proposed rates that result from those level of service proposals that we have in the zone improvement plan. Let me put up a graph here as well. One of the questions at the last city council meeting, and this came up at the... Try to squeeze that in there. This came up at the Finance Committee meeting as well. So you can see where the city of Fisher's lands currently. This is $1,070 down in this area here. This is our current rate. This is the rate that has been in effect since 2006. So this rate, again, has not been updated in 10 years. These are for the single-family detached homes. The new rate would be 1,667, which would put us still about $300 or $400 below CARMEL. CARMEL just updated their rates last year to this amount, just over 2,000. And several of these communities will be updating in the next couple of years as well. So it raises that rate, 1,667, but I think one of the things that we talk about as we develop in the price point in homes in Fisher's, that you see $300,000 and upward, 1,667 on that amount of 300,000 plus is a relatively small amount. So again, just to kind of provide some context, again, the multifamily side of it is 1,234. We had the Indian Apartment Association review that as well. Builders Association of Greater Indianapolis, BAGI has reviewed these, as well as the Finance Committee, Parks Advisory Committee, Plan Commission, all with favorable recommendations. So those are the two rates. Would ask for first reading tonight. This would go back to Plan Commission in the month of May, then we'd bring back to, excuse me, the city council for second and possibly third reading in the month of May.
Any questions for Tony? We've had first reading. Thanks, Tony.
Thanks.
Moving on to item 14. Request to adopt First Amendment to Agreement for Transfer Real Property Buy-in Between the City of Fisher's and Sunbeam Development Corporation.
Good evening, councilors. Mr. President, for the record, Brandon Dickinson, Director of Economic Development. I'd like to address items 14 and 15 on the agenda in tandem, if agreeable to the council. Starting with item 15, the Topgolf project encountered some real estate difficulties with the originally proposed site. And unless an alternative site on the Sunbeam properties could be identified, the project was in limbo. So Topgolf and Sunbeam landed on the parcel directly east of I-69 and north of 116th Street as the new Topgolf destination. The new parcel is provided as the only amendment to Topgolf's agreement with the city that's provided in your packet. All parties are very excited about this new location. And as to item number 14, the amendment there would allow Sunbeam to recruit some of the improvement funds dedicated by Sunbeam to the city of Fisher's if development on that parcel occurs within the next 365 days. We anticipate Topgolf will be that development at the parcel, and that is identical. The attachment of item 14 and 15 are identical to each other, the parcel in question. So again, Topgolf's agreement with the city is fully transferable to this new site, and only the parcel location is changing. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Brandon? Do we have to vote one at a time, or can we vote together? I'm both...
Yeah, they're two separate agreements, so please vote one at a time.
Motion by Pete. Second by Todd. Alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion to approve item 15.
Motion by Pete, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Selena. Alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same. We have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item 16. Request to adopt ordinance amending the nickel plate review committee... review committee, excuse me.
Good evening. For the record, Leah McGrath, Deputy Mayor for the city of Fisher's. Am I here on the right item? For the nickel plate review committee. This is an amendment to the ordinance that we're requesting, actually, consideration of first, second, and third reading. It's amendment to the composition of the committee for the business representatives who are appointed by the mayor. The nickel plate review committee helps implement the nickel plate code for this area, and we're just asking that the residential requirements and the property ownership requirements be expanded to include the entire city of Fisher's and not just the nickel plate district, so that we have a larger pool of folks that we might be able to appoint.
In full transparency, one of the challenges is when you require only the people to be on the committee that are owners or landowners and business owners in the downtown, it becomes very difficult to find people that aren't conflicted out on the developments that we're trying to do in downtown. So broadening that horizon to get people from outside of that area also brings a variety of perspective, but also allows us to have people that aren't conflicted out because they're right next to the building or they're impacted somehow by the building.
Right.
Any questions for Leah?
I have a statement. I will say that as being part of that committee, we do have a problem getting a quorum at times. So that would be very helpful to be able to pull from a larger pool of people.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Pete. Second by Eric. Alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Do we have a motion? I have a motion approved. Do we have a second? Second by Todd. Alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Eyes have it. Any other unfinished or new business? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Selena, do we have a second? Second by Pete. Alls in favor, please say aye. Aye. Please say aye. We are adjourned. Have a great week.